Well, good evening and welcome everyone. I call the April 7, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are orientation of new planning commission and landmark preservation board members and a continuation of a study session addressing the general downtown corridor, three-floor overlay and related code amendments. Before we move on to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. As with our previous meetings, the commissioners and staff will be participating by Zoom. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. Imagine Bothell's notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provide information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by 3:00 PM today, and we do have some folks who are going to comment. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advance notice will be able to make comments under the audience comment section of the meeting. An email was encouraged as well as acknowledged, and we have received a few emails that are included in our packet and one that was forwarded after the packet went out. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Westerback. Commissioner Kurd.
Present.
Commissioner Robson.
Present.
Commissioner Alderks.
Here.
And Commissioner Gustafson.
Present.
In addition to the commissioners who are all present this evening, Community Development Director Mike Cotterman, Sarah DiSimione, a historic preservation consultant working for the city, Senior Planner Nathan Lamb, and Senior Planner Dave Boyd are also in attendance. And we have a couple of landmark commission members in attendance. Should we now recognize them? Director Cotterman?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. We have three new landmark board, landmark preservation board members joining us this evening for the orientation section. And I thought we would do introductions of everyone when we get to the orientation part itself. But I can mention, just for the purposes of the audience, very quickly, we have Alex. I will apologize, I will probably not get your last name correct on my first attempt, but please correct me. Is it Alex Babatzanoff?
Perfect.
I got lucky, thank you. Rami Alcabra and Larry Reed. So, welcome to our guests this evening.
So, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking and try to remember to unmute when you intend to speak. If you are streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For the commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up the yellow speaker cards or otherwise getting my attention. When there are a lot of us, sometimes it's hard to see across the ribbon, so I will scan back and forth, so please be patient. And this will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make or second a motion or participate in debate. And again, please mute your microphone when not speaking. First item on the agenda is public comment. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. Director Cotterman, please let us know who would like to speak with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three people who had notified ahead of time that they would like to speak this evening. We also have about 18 attendees. And I know some of those, I've had a chance initially, they did not wish to speak, but I will ask when we get through these three speakers if there are any of the others in the attendee room that would like to speak this evening, and we will call on them at that time. So, the first speaker I have this evening is Linda Carey. And we'll bring her in. Linda, can you hear me? Could you unmute?
Hi, Michael, so sorry.
No, that's quite all right. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. And you have three minutes.
Okay, ready, set, go. Hi, folks, my name's Linda Carey. I live on Valley View Road and will be directly impacted by the proposed rezoning action. Noted in designation Block E, so between 522 and Valley View Road. And so, I just want to let you guys know that I'm thoroughly opposed to that. I cannot even imagine the thought of having a four-story building right across the street. It's from my little single-level bungalow house. Secondly, I'm really concerned about the traffic that all this addition will happen. I've lived here for 13 years and I've seen the traffic get worse and worse. And I am, you know, Kaysner is just a rough road to get out from Valley View. And so, I think we could be asking for an abundance of accidents if we keep adding more and more people in that area. And secondly, I'm really concerned about any negative impact to the value of my home by replacing that territorial view with large-scale housing with windows staring straight down into my home. So, those are kind of the concerns that I have. But mostly, I have questions. And you can either answer them now or, you know, mull around on them, you know, as you need to and get back to me. But I'm curious as to why we need to keep adding so many houses or so many apartment, tall apartment buildings in downtown Bothell. That's a curiosity. It's changing the whole look and feel of Bothell. The proposed housing type seems like dorms that are going to be going around here. So, is there something going on? Is there something that the college has plans for the Sunrise Valley View Road or Sunrise Valley View neighborhood? Is there some plans with that? I'm curious if you can help me out understanding that. And so, I just would like to know how we can help influence your decision-making as the neighbors. Like I said, I've been here 13 years. I dearly love this little town. I tricked my son into moving, you know, moving here because of Bothell and how wonderful it is. And I really don't want to see this little community that's been here for like 60 years change and not be, it won't be Bothell anymore when we have all these towering buildings. And lastly, I really hope that you're hearing our voices as long-term residents. I've walked the neighborhood, everybody's quite upset. So, whatever you can do to help us understand and to help us feel secure in our neighborhood, I would sincerely appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Linda.
You bet.
And Dave Boyd, the senior planner with the city, will be presenting later on this evening, and I expect he will answer some of your questions and those that he can answer this evening, he'll follow up with you later on.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, and next, Mr. Chair, I have... Sorry, I'm trying to do two things at once and I'm not doing either one very well. Next speaker we have is Emily, Reverend Emily Austin. Emily, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, I can hear you.
Okay, you have three minutes.
Thank you. We have very similar concerns as the previous speaker. We are on Circle Drive and we are a construction-weary neighborhood. There's been so much construction on the University of Washington campus, including the parking garage that just went in and the new proposed building that's going in there. And then, this is going to change the nature and livability of the neighborhood, and we're concerned about the natural habitat. We have migratory birds and owls in our neighborhood. And again, we love this community and neighborhood. And we have a similar, we've heard similar feelings on our street, Circle Drive, with just the general livability and environment of the neighborhood changing. And then, my husband Ronald sent a comment.
So, we will include this within three minutes, if that's acceptable?
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Okay, well, so, there's people who have been here well before the 20 years that the college has been and has been here. And there's been a lot of construction around the college, and people didn't really sign up for this. And even early on, even maybe 15 years ago, since about 15 years, there's been a lot of construction that people haven't really signed up for. I understand there's an argument, people who may have moved here in the last five or eight years kind of knew what they were getting into, but people who've lived here over 15 years. And then, in addition, my last question is that whom are we speaking with? So, do you live in the community? I would assume some of the people who are decision-making people on here do. But whom are we speaking with? We live, you know, we live up the block here. We live right next to University of Washington Bothell, you can look us up. And so, because, do we have any understanding from you or empathy from you? Do you live with the construction that's going on? I'm just curious about that as well. And that's my comment and my question.
Mike, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Even though you gave me that reminder at the beginning of the meeting. I am looking for... Oops. Mr. Flora, here we are. Bart, can you hear me? Can you hear me? I'm not sure what's, what the problem is, Mr. Chair.
Well...
Bart, we will come back to you. If you can unmute at some point, let us know. And I'm going to see if there are any of the attendees, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I see I have one additional speaker who would like to raise, who would like to speak. So, let me bring her in.
While you're doing that, I'll just note that Bart Flora is the applicant for this code amendment, and I'm also going to give him a chance to weigh in as part of my presentation. Hopefully, if he does want to speak, then he'll be able to jump in.
Mary, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, you have three minutes, Mary.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate some concerns of my neighbors. I've been here 25 years, I live on Valley View. And there's already an issue with traffic. People drive through on Valley View, and we have little kids living on this residential, in this residential neighborhood and on Valley View. And in some places, no sidewalks. I don't know why, how they even get going so fast when they come around that corner. But I'm concerned about the building on Kaysner Way and Beardsley, that corner there, because it's a tall building there is going to overlook the little ramblers in the neighborhood. And I'm concerned about this large complex there looking at building on Valley View, which is going to tower over the rambler again in this neighborhood. Is an issue, it's unrealistic to think that people in micro housing do not have cars. Even homeless people have cars, they're living in them. I know that there's a big problem in Valley View where they built micro housing and the parking lot is full, and the people living in that housing park in the... When you come down there to shop and say Fairhaven, you cannot find parking. You just drive around on a Saturday trying to find parking, there's nothing. So, the parking's already an issue in Bothell. It's only going to get worse with you build a bunch of micro housing with limited parking. And I'm just concerned about the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I think that was, those are my primary concerns. Yeah, that's, I just want to reiterate. And also, Norman Sadie had some, had a very nicely-written letter expressing our concerns, and I support those concerns as well.
Okay, thank you, Mary. And if, I'm not seeing any other hands. I'm going to try... Mr. Flora. One more time. Jim, can you unmute your microphone, please?
Okay, can you hear me now? This is Diane White.
Diane, thank you. It shows up as Jim White, my apologies.
Well, he's, he signed in, I couldn't get you signed in on my iPhone.
Okay, you have, you have three minutes, Diane.
Okay, I just want, I live on 182nd Court and at the end of the cul-de-sac, and we have a four-story garage in our backyard. So, I just want to support all the folks on Valley View and Circle Drive who have already spoken. It's, all the new building and all the things that are going on in Bothell now are quite disconcerting. We have been here for 35 years. And it's, we're about ready to move out of the city because of what's going on here. And I just feel like that we are the taxpayers and the college is the tax absorbers. Do we not have any rights at all? Us residents who live here and have for many, many years and built lovely homes and now are facing possibly moving away because of it? So, I just don't understand why the residents aren't as seriously considered as big developers and colleges and so on and so forth. I just find it rather disconcerting and frustrating and very sad. Like, it's pretty much how I feel, but I am in total support of everyone in our neighborhood. It's been very difficult for some of us. When you look at your backyard and you see a four-story garage with lights in the middle of the night and you get no cooperation from anyone to at least try to consider dimming the lights or doing anything to make our lives easier, it's just isn't happening. So, anyway, that's my frustration with what's going on around us that we don't seem to have any control over. So, yeah, I guess that's all I have to say right now.
Well, thank you, Diane. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I have a couple other hands that have gone up. I'm going to try Mr. Flora again. I think he's come logged out and back in. Bart, can you hear me? Bart, can you unmute? And I think we've lost him again. Okay, I have some...
Director Cotterman, we have some folks commenting on the chat function and also someone asking questions on the Q&amp;A function. So...
I am not familiar with those, the chat function, I'm not familiar with the Q&amp;A function. Just let me...
The icon on the bottom and someone threw in a question.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that those are part of the public record.
We will make sure that we, that we retain those somehow. We would ask that if you do have comments, please send them in to david-boyd@bothellwa.gov so that we can make sure we get those into the public record.
And I would ask, this is Dave Boyd. I would ask that you, the speakers that have not emailed comments into me, if you could email me so that I have your contact information and can enter you as a party of record so that you'll get notices about this issue as it goes forward. So, that would be Mary Dujie and Diane White. Could send me just a quick note to be on the record. And also, I've got Joanna Willingham's question here. I can try to, I'm not able to copy that, but I will try to type an answer to that for you.
If she could provide her email, we can make sure that that information, including your response, gets to the planning commission as well. So, we'll do a screen capture of the comments, and if you could provide an email contact information, we will follow up on those questions. Okay, Bart, one more time, can you unmute?
Hello?
There you are.
All right.
Okay, you have, you have three minutes.
Well, thank you, I was hoping to reply at the end of the meeting. Is that still an opportunity?
Yes, Dave will bring you in after his presentation.
Okay, I think I'll defer until that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I will, I have a couple more that have raised their hands. We have Chris Gustafson, Chris.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
I live on Circle Drive. And I'm concerned, I'd like to, I'd like to try to understand how this small, thin, steep, tree, already has residential homes on it piece of property became a bargaining chip for the developer who built the homes, the homes, the condos, I guess, on Beardsley across from the college campus. That's what I was told, that there was some kind of deal struck between the developer there, that he agreed to have affordable housing constructed somewhere, excuse me, within the city limits of Bothell. And somehow, they picked our little spot here. So, it's not like it's a big open piece of ground. There's apartments that were turned into condominiums, there's the gray ones that I unfortunately don't know the name of on the corner. And there are three residential homes that are on the top of that as far as this corridor goes. And there are three of my neighbors. So, to me, it's a residential neighborhood that you're trying, that someone is trying to or force some kind of housing that we're not even sure that we understand because there's already existing houses. We don't understand what a third-floor overlay is. The buildings are already three stories. The gray ones are two, the other ones are three. And then, there's a little blank piece that I have been under the impression of for 2018 was owned by the college. And it kind of doglegs down towards side 22. Then, there are three residential homes all in a row. So, then, there's the parking issue that we've made. That's in the flyer, that there, this developer wants to appoint .75 parking spaces per unit. I don't know how many units anyone's talking about, but that's not even a full parking space for one person living in there. Now, you put two, three, we don't know how many people in each unit. Where are all the cars going to go? Where's the ingress, where's the egress? How are they going to get into this building? How are they going to get out of this building in that little skinny piece of steep land? So, I'm concerned about so many things. I'd like for somebody to define affordable housing. I think there's a big difference between affordable housing, low-income housing, student housing. Maybe that's, maybe that's not a concern to anyone, but once they amend the code, I would say that they could play fast and loose with any of those terms. I'm not against anybody having affordable housing certainly, but I think this is an inappropriate location for that.
Okay, I've got you at three minutes, so if you have any concluding comments?
My concluding comment, I guess, would be, I guess, what is, well, maybe it's more of a question. What is your definition of affordable housing in the context of this code amendment? Thank you.
And, oops, you're muted, Director.
You're muted, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheila, can you hear me? Sheila, can you hear me now?
I am, it rejoined on me for some reason.
Okay, that's, yes, one of the quirks of Zoom. So, if you could also state your last name for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
Sheila Hunter, and I don't need all of three minutes. I too am on Valley View Road, and I am in agreement with everything that's been said so far. The problem is, people here are angry and frustrated. I've been in this location for 30 years, and it seems like every change that Bothell has made and we have objected to has been ignored. And actually, we feel like anything we have to say here isn't going to make a difference at all. But we felt we had to stand up at least to try and fight back. And I'm in agreement with one of the other women who said that they're ready to move because they are not happy with what's going on here. So, that's my two cents. And I also have an email that I sent to Dave, and it's in the, in the printout, in the PDF. So, that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you very much, Sheila. Those are all of the people that have signed up or raised their hand to speak, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you all who did comment. I'd like to remind everyone that this is the public comment portion of this meeting's agenda, and it's a study session on these amendments this evening. There will be a public hearing later on in the process where people... people will have an opportunity to comment. I'd also add, this is, I believe, our third Zoom meeting transition to this platform. So it's the first time we've had people use the Q and A and chat function. So we're negotiating that change as well. So again, thank you for commenting, and at this point, we'll move on to the remainder of the agenda. So our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have before us the March 17th minutes for that meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Kerd?
I'm going to approve the meeting minutes from March 17th.
All right. Is there a motion to second? Commissioner Dodd?
Second the motion, thanks.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve those minutes. Any comment on the minutes? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes. Commissioner Kerd? Commissioner Alderks? Oh, just approving, okay. I see, one, two, three, four, five, six. Commissioner Gustafson, do you? All right, it's unanimous, the approval of the minutes. So the minutes of the March 17th meeting are approved as submitted. On our new business, we have orientation of new members, both commissioner, planning commissioners, and members of the Landmark Preservation Board. So I'll turn the meeting over.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very pleased to have all of our new commissioners and board members join us this evening. Again, welcome to the Landmark Preservation Board, new members that are joining us tonight. We have a brief orientation that we do for all new members of boards and commissions, and we thought it would be helpful because some of the background, most of what we're talking about this evening is related to planning in general, what the department does, sort of the functions of the boards and commissions and the, and the role of the staff, that would be beneficial for both groups to hear. Sarah Desimone, who's our Historic Preservation Consultant, will do a more in-depth and targeted orientation for the Landmark Preservation Board members at your next meeting in April. But we thought this would provide some good background for, for everyone, including for the, the existing or current members, previous members of the Planning Commission who are carrying over in their terms, because many of them were new this past year as well. So just maybe a little refresher for, for some of those folks. We will take, we will stop during the presentation at various points and see if you have any questions. And so at this point, Nathan, if you could bring up the PowerPoint, share your screen.
Sure.
And we'll, we'll start out, we'll ask all of the members to introduce yourselves. So if we can go to the next slide, please, Nathan. So this evening, we're, we'll just do quick introductions of all of the commission and board members that are here. We'll have staff, we'll introduce ourselves as we get to the slides that we'll be talking about. So everyone in the staff tonight has a speaking role. You'll get to meet all of us and hear a little bit from us. We'll be talking about the department mission and how that relates to the work of the board and commission. We'll give you some context for the planning work that we do, our context in terms of the city as a whole, as well as the, where the city fits in the region, discussing some about the community vision, including what's in the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. Dave Boyd will provide a little bit of an overview of downtown. That's one of the areas of the city where there's probably some overlap in terms of the issues that arise between the commission and, and the board. And then we'll talk a little bit more about the roles of each. I'll do just a real quick highlight of the planning docket. That's the work program for both the board and for the commission for this year. And then we take any additional questions you might have at the end. And as I said, we'll, we'll stop during the presentation as well. So Nathan, so this is, real quick, you can see the membership of each one. We've bold and italicized the, the members, the names of the new members for each of the, the board and commission. So with that, Nathan, if you could take the PowerPoint down for a moment, and if we could do quick introductions, and Mr. Chair, if you would like to start with introductions, maybe who you are, what, you know, what you do, if you have something you do in your other life besides being a commissioner, maybe how long you've been on the commission, and why, why you're interested in being on a board or commission.
Remembering to unmute before I speak. Yes, Kevin Kiernan, Chair of the Commission for a year now, I guess, maybe a little bit more. Been on the commission three-plus years, I think, perhaps a little bit more than that. I am currently retired. I'm a licensed civil engineer with specialty environmental engineering, and had a 30-year career with King County in Solid Waste Division, ranging from, I started as, I like to say, I started as an engineer and ended as a bureaucrat. So as I moved through the ranks, I've had experience with land use in citing public facilities, and I've been a 36-year resident now of Bothell and thought, now that I'm retired, it's time to get involved at the city level. So that's, that's my story here. Moving on.
Karsten, would you like to go, or Commissioner Kerd, excuse me?
Sure, I'll go next. Hi, my name is Karsten. I am the Chair Pro Tem, which just is a fancy way of saying that if Kevin is gone, I step in to run the meetings. I have lived here in Bothell for a while now. I am a geologist in my professional life, geologist in training, and working towards licensure under some engineers. So I work throughout Puget Sound region and critical areas, especially geologically critical areas like landslides, erosion hazard zones, and seismic areas as well. And so I hope to bring that expertise to the Bothell Planning Commission, especially since we have so many critical areas here and sensitive environmental areas. In my free time, I like to bike, and I also like to read. Oh, and what brings me to the Planning Commission? I guess it's the critical areas and preserving natural areas. Thanks.
So why don't we go in order of seniority? So Commissioner Dodd, I believe you're next in line.
Thank you, Director. My name is Amanda Dodd. This year will be my 28th year in Bothell. Moved here as a very young child, and I am now raising my family in Bothell. I have seen a lot of transformation of the city in my time, and I also just really like living here. So I volunteered to serve on the commission to kind of give back to the city a little bit. In my professional life, I'm actually a technical account manager at a tech company, so that doesn't directly translate like some of our other commissioners' experience, but land use and zoning is very interesting to me. So I feel like I landed on the right commission. And I actually live in the Shelton View neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. And next, we actually have a tie in seniority, so I'll go alphabetically. Commissioner Alderks?
Thank you, Director Cotterman. Jenny Alderks here. In my non-commissioner life, I am a professional doula. That means that I support families who are having babies throughout Puget Sound region, King County and Snohomish County, and lived here for about 10 years. My kids are growing up here. And because, because we're a homeschooling family, the, the city and how it's structured and the kind of lived environment of the city really matters to me. And I, I'm on the Planning Commission to contribute to my city, to serve, and to be able to weigh in on how land is used around here locally and in a way that we can make it, make sure that it's friendly to families and affordable for young people like me and other millennials. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I have been on the commission for almost one year. I live in the Norway Hill neighborhood. I call it Lower Norway Hill slash Brickyard. I, in my professional life, am an accountant. I usually work doing taxes of nonprofits, their IRS filings, as well as small and medium businesses, some of whom are located very close to us in Bothell. And I joined the Planning Commission because I am concerned about economic sustainability for the city and how regulations affect that, the consequences, both intended and unintended, of the plans we create, as well as expanding public engagement among the broadest possible group of populations that live in Bothell in the planning process. So thank you.
Thank you. And our two newest commissioners, and Commissioner Robson has, has one week seniority on Commissioner Westerback. So Commissioner Robson?
Want to hold hand at this now? Excuse me, yes. I'm Claire. I am just aged one week on the commission, and I, in my current state, I am a writer. Previously, I was a special ed middle school teacher. And I joined the commission for a lot of reasons, as I'm sure is common. I live on the trail, right next to the college. And so I'm directly impacted by how downtown and the college is structured. I also was really affected as two of my neighbors have recently become homeless, outpriced of their home, their apartments. And that really is something that got me interested in affordable housing and motivated me to apply for a position.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Westerback, welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone. Welcome. My name's Kerry Westerback, and I've now lived in Bothell again. I grew up in Woodinville, and I lived also in Kenmore 12 years prior to being in Bothell. I've been here for six years with my family, my wife and two daughters. And professionally, I'm an architect, and I also dabble a little bit in development and construction, built a small mixed-use project that I live in downtown with my family with. So I've actually spent a lot of time using and applying the Bothell Land Use Codes and Building Codes. So I'm intensely interested in that because of my profession, and I spend a lot of time looking at codes. I care a lot about how Bothell develops and what its future is, and I'm particularly interested in affordable housing and the things we can do within our code to, to make it more naturally occurring, not just a special thing that you have to get grant money to do, but help everyone be able to participate that in that with the way we fashion our land use code. Interested in really just the plan coming up and changes we'll make in that to look into the 21st century and be coding and planning for climate change issues and traffic safety issues and all the things land use touches on. So excited to be here. It's something I wanted to do for a while. So thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Westerback actually comes to us from the Landmark Preservation Board. He was the most recent chair of that group. So one of the three of you new members have him to thank for jumping ship and joining us at the Planning Commission.
I meant to say that. Thank you very much.
So I'll go in alphabetical order with our new board members. So Board Member Al Cabra?
Oh, hi. My name is Rami Al Cabra. I misunderstood you, Director, on the, the comment. I have to thank Kerry for jumping ship from the landmarks to, to the Planning Commission for me and me taking over his spot. So I'm very thankful for that, for this opportunity. My, I, my professional life, I'm a product manager, and product managers, you know, identify problems when working with the community and then finding solutions also with the, with the customers, who are the community in this case. My interest in the National Preservation Board is because I am very interested in celebrating and embracing the, the history of Bothell, which goes be, even before Bothell was established, including highlighting and commemorating the native and maybe some African-American contributions to the community and expanding the, you know, hoping, hopefully, within, you know, the rules, you know, expanding the, the scope of the board to go beyond just buildings and actually having landmarks be more than just the buildings that go on a register, but doing more than that. So, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for joining the board. Board Member Babad Zanoff?
Hello, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Perfect. I'm Alex Babad Zanoff. I live in the Bentley neighborhood in Bothell, on the border with Kirkland. And I've been in Bothell for about 11 years, and I'm raising my family there. I have an eight-year-old son. And we, we, we grew, I grew up in Kirkland and the Bellevue area, but I, like some of the people complaining earlier today, I, you know, I didn't become a fan of those cities as they grew too big. And I decided to, you know, with the free time I have, with other volunteer groups, to join something in our city that will help preserve it and keep its charm. And my nine-to-five, I run a, actually, a commercial fishing company and unrelated to anything on this board, but that's, that's the excitement for me. And as a hobby, I actually restore and revive old furniture and preserve it. And I'm into antiques, and hence I joined the Landmark Preservation Board. It was the best fit for me. So that's that.
Great. Well, thank you. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Board Member Reed? And you're, you're muted.
There.
There you are.
Wrong button. So, yes, I'm a 16-year resident of Bothell on West Hill, a couple of blocks downhill from the high school. And I think, well, this is my, my first chance at doing any kind of volunteer work. I've retired from a 40-year career in architecture, mostly in commercial and large institutional, and of that, mostly hospitals. So I do have a lot of background in, in construction. A lot of my emphasis was on a building envelope or enclosures and just general architecture all around. So my emphasis obviously would be on buildings, but I also am interested in other significant locations like Brickyard Road, like cemeteries, like anything that's historical. I've become quite an amateur history buff myself. I really like kind of digging into something that hasn't been discovered yet. And also, I think, being on the Landmark Preservation Board, I'd want to emphasize the preservation part of that and keep what's good and maybe even embellish it in a way that it's more outstanding. Because the more we lose now, the less there's going to be in the future. My wife is, you know, as I got involved in this, she says, there isn't any history in, in Bothell. She's from England. So to her, something that's historical is 300 years old or somewhere in that range. So, but I point out to her, you know, there's things from 1884, and she says, oh. So anyway, it won't get old if it, if it isn't kept now. So that's my idea, is to take care of it now so it's there for future generations. And I'm really excited to be part of it.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for joining the board. So thank you for those introductions. And Nathan, if you could put the PowerPoint back up, we'll get on with our presentation.
All right, good to go?
Okay, next slide, please.
All right.
So one of the things that I wanted to talk about is the department mission, because this is, this is what touches on all of the work that we do as staff, but also the work that, that all of you will do as members of the board and commission. So just to highlight a few of the things here as we talk about that, some of the key words that you'll notice in here are collaboration, residents, businesses, and colleagues. We're, we're an externally-facing department, so we work with the public, we work with stakeholders, we work with different agents- We work with different agencies in the region and the state. And we're, we're that conduit for information sharing and also for idea sharing. In working with all of those groups to promote a community that celebrates its history, embraces its present and envisions its future. So we run the gamut in terms of the time continuum. As history obviously has to do with a lot of the work of the Landmark Preservation Board. The present has to do with how we're implementing the vision that's created through the comprehensive plan. And all of that works together in in terms of the work that we do as a department. Then our values are are highlighted there at the bottom with integrity, honesty, respect, care, patience, empathy. And all to create a safe, sustainable and healthy environment for people. The work that we do is about the people, the people that live here, the people that are going to live here. So we have to look at that, the full breadth of that. So next slide, please. So now I'm going to turn it over. Oh, I forgot to introduce myself. I think most of you know who I am, but just a little about my background. So my name is Mike Cotterman. I'm the Community Development Director for the city. I've been with the city now for three years. I've been doing this planning work in one form or another for somewhere between 35 and 40 years, experience working with cities as small as 400 and as large as over a million. Working public and private sector. Most of my career has been here in the Puget Sound region for the last 30 years. And as I said, I've been here with Bothell now for three years and just a fantastic community and really excited to be a part of everything that's happening in the city. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah Desamone to introduce herself and talk about this aspect of our of our mission. Sarah?
Hello, thank you. So I am Sarah Desamone. I'm an architectural historian. And I work as the city's historic preservation consultant. I've been here for about seven years, I think now. Working with the landmark board and the planning department. And a big part of my job is to help celebrate Bothell's history. So as a lot of you know already, Bothell is a certified local government community, which just means that it has a historic preservation program that's been approved by the state Historic Preservation Office. The landmark board has a, has a big part in sort of helping carry out the duties required of a CLG community. Some of those include maintaining the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks, which as a lot of you probably know, is a list of in Bothell, 23 building site structures and objects that have some architectural integrity and historical significance to the city. These are the buildings that are protected. The owners of these buildings have signed contracts agreeing to maintain the architectural integrity of their buildings. And the landmarks role in that is the city requires that these buildings be reviewed before any changes can be made to the exterior of them. So the landmark board will review those buildings and determine if if the things the owners want to do are appropriate for the building. So that, you know, the purpose being that we can change the buildings to make them livable for 21st century life, but also keep their integrity as their, you know, original appearance. For just a quick example, this house here in the picture was built in the 1880s. And it was recently rehabilitated for sale as part of a new development called Poets Cove. And the landmark board had a, had a big part in reviewing all of the work that was done on that house to make sure that it was able to maintain its style and form and materials to some extent, but also to make it livable for today. And as a CLG community, a certified local government, Bothell can offer financial incentives to developers and to homeowners for projects like this, which really help to make it more feasible. In addition to the Bothell Register, which is a voluntary designation with some limitations, like I said, on alterations. The city also maintains an inventory of properties that are over 50 years old. And the goal is just to keep, keep an eye on properties that could potentially be historic based on their age and from that inventory, we, the landmark board and staff are able to kind of keep an eye on properties and create lists that of properties that are likely going to be eligible for the Bothell Register. And the city also uses these lists of historic and potentially historic properties to guide planning efforts and to help maintain the unique sense of place in Bothell in, as a lot of people mentioned tonight, you know, an ever changing built environment. So finally, the city also promotes historic preservation in a number of ways. Particularly through educational opportunities. There have been a number of programs on different historical topics held in conjunction with the library, the museum and McMenamins, nothing recently, obviously. There's also been articles published by staff in local publications and blogs. The landmark board has done brochures about preservation and walking tours. And the landmark board also published a book several years ago called Bothell That And Now. So overall, the city does a really good job of celebrating its history and incorporating historic preservation into its planning policies. So.
Okay, I've got the next slide. My name's Nathan Lamb. Nice, nice to meet you all. And good to see you all, members of the commission. I'm going to pivot here talking about, Sarah was just talking about Bothell's history and we're going to start talking a little bit what's envisioned for Bothell's future. A little bit about my background. I'm actually new to Bothell. This is my third, I'm coming into my third month with the city. Relatively young in my career. This is about my fifth year as a planner. I just come from Virginia where I got the bulk of my experience. I was working in a government planning department in Chesapeake, Virginia, in the Hampton Roads region and was living in Norfolk. So what I, what I was doing there was working in the comprehensive planning division with some, working on design guidelines and implementing some special policy area plans. But I also staffed the Historic and Architecture Review Board and did some administered some similar programs and things that the LPB does here, giving out certificates of appropriateness for homeowners in our local historic district that wanted to change anything to the exterior of their homes. So my background's in community development and yeah, I've just trying to get a well rounded background and I'll be working with the city of Bothell to implement the the new Canyon Park sub area plan. As well as getting ready for our next comprehensive plan update, which I'm going to talk a little bit about right now. So again, nice, nice to meet you all. So imagine Bothell is Bothell's comprehensive plan. We're going to talk about comprehensive plans in a little bit more detail later, specifically ours, but they're really the centerpiece of local planning efforts. We, we list our goals, objectives, policies and actions and even development standards in our comprehensive plan for how we want to see our city develop in a 20 year planning horizon. The, the next major update is in 2024 with the last one being in 2015. In terms of the Planning Commission's overall responsibility with the comprehensive plan update, as, as I understand it, and it's a little bit different and from state to state is according to the Bothell Municipal Code. You know, the Planning Commission acts in an advisory capacity to the city manager and, and city council. So any proposed amendments and, and updates to the comp plan. The, the Planning Commission will, will make a recommendation on those to city council to officially adopt subsequently. Also, there's a big public engagement process with comprehensive plan updates and typically planning commissions help to facilitate those along with planning staff as well. There's some additional engagement that goes on update. We've got other boards, short the shorelines board. You all, the LPB, Parks and Recreation Arts Commission who you know, some of them also, they have their own official business. But, but they, they will give input to any proposed changes as well. And then finally for me, before I pass it off to Dave. We are, the backend of our comprehensive plan is broken down into 17 sub area plans. For example, Canyon Park downtown and the Fitzgerald 35th Avenue sub areas. And these are essentially just more specific policy and development regulations to sort of tailor you know, neighborhoods in these sub areas to make them distinct from other, other places in, in Bothell. With that, I'll pass it on to Dave.
Thank you, Nathan. And good to meet all of the new commissioners and board members. I have been with the city of Bothell, it'll be 17 years this, this coming June. And I am by training and registration, I'm, I'm an architect. But I've always worked for firms that have done a mix of architecture and urban design and, and planning work. And about 20 years ago, I, I made the jump from private consulting into planning, working for the City of Seattle Neighborhood Plan Implementation Team and then coming to Bothell in, in 2005. I was hired to, to coordinate the work on the downtown plan. So, and I'll be talking about that a little bit more later. So a, a big part of our work is taking the vision that has been developed, working with the citizens and, and the various boards and commissions. And trying to make that become a reality. That's done through the, the development regulations in the Bothell Municipal Code. Primarily Title 12, as it come in terms of the planning commission work. But also the administrative section in Title 11, the environmental regulations in Title 14. Subdivision regulations in, in Title 15 and some involvement with the transportation regulations in Title 17. So all of those, any amendments to any of those codes will come through Planning Commission. The Landmark Preservation Board deals with Title 22. And I'll let, Sarah, did you want to add anything there? Feel free to jump in.
No, we'll go, we'll go deep into that at the next meeting.
Okay. The landmark board also has some limited advisory role in development review for downtown special review area, which I'll touch on soon, and also for projects that are on the historic register. And then we, we have some input on our capital facilities plan and, and those those investments as well as we are involved in reviewing capital projects to make sure that that they are consistent with, with the comprehensive plan. So next.
Okay, and I'll pick it back up. So we're going to just give an overview of the Bothell planning area. Which is, well, most people don't know is two parts. We have our, within our current city limits, 13.5 square miles with a 2020 estimated population of 48,400 people, 61% of them being in King, or yeah, King County and 39 in Snohomish County. We also have the Snohomish County Annexation Area where our urban growth area, the acronym is MOOGA. The land area is approximately 3,500 acres with a approximate population of 22,000 people. So together, the city with the potential areas for annexation at a later date is about 19.4 square miles and we have the potential for a population capacity of about 64,000 people by 2040. The urban growth areas are mostly administered by the counties. But if there's any plan to expand urban growth areas or retract them, they do have to consult with the cities, but they, they typically set the densities and, and zones and development criteria in, in those urban growth areas. Booming back out to the larger regional context, we're going to give overview of sort of the top down process of how planning works here in Washington. Starting with the State Growth Management Act, which was adopted in 1990. And it essentially requires fast growing cities and counties to develop comp plans to manage their, their populations and economic development. There are some mandatory elements that have to go into comprehensive plans and there's also optional elements that municipalities can opt into including in their comprehensive plan. Ours, ours is mixed. We, we have our mandatory elements, but we also have opted to give goals and actions and, and policies for some of the optional elements. So next you've got the Puget Sound Regional Council, PSRC is their acronym. They are a four county area, King County, Pierce County, Kitsap County and Snohomish County. And they adopt and administer and implement the Vision 2050 Plan, which was just updated not too long ago from Vision 2040. And essentially they create policy called multi county planning policies that give direction for the four counties within our region. And Bothell in particular straddles two counties, King and Snohomish County. Which is kind of unique for compared to other jurisdictions in our area. And we get direction from those counties called countywide planning policies. And those essentially help us with our, with our comprehensive plan. And this is sort of how it works. It, we work our way from the state to the region to the county down to our comprehensive plan and then eventually our zoning and development regulations. So I think the next slide is, Dave is going to talk a little bit more about our visions.
Nathan, before you go on to the next slide.
Yep.
Just elaborate on a couple of things that, that you've touched on here in this one. I want to point out, and I don't know if you can use your cursor to show where Bothell is on this map. It's got the, the outlined area. And you'll notice the blue dot there. That is the city's regional growth center. We're one of 29 regional growth centers in the four county region. Those are designated by the Puget Sound Regional Council. And the reason that's important is that puts us into a different category than some of the other cities that don't have the blue dot. So those are the cities that because of, of the, the growth that's anticipated. We're going to see a, a larger share of growth in terms of population and jobs over the, the, the planning horizon, which for the Puget Sound Regional Council is 2050. So it's about 30 years out. What they're projecting for the four county region is an increase in population during that time period from 2020 to 2050. An increase in population of about 1.8 million people in the four county area. Including 1.2 million more jobs. So to put that in context, 1.8 million people is the equivalent of 40 cities, the, the current size of Bothell. So we're, part of our challenge then is to how, figure out how best to accommodate that growth that's anticipated. This doesn't create the growth. It requires us to plan for that growth in a way that can get the most benefit for the region as a whole and for the individual cities as we absorb that growth. So that's getting at some of the issues that we've heard earlier this evening. The growth is going to come whether we plan for it or not. So what we're trying to do is put together a plan that accommodates that in a way that preserves as best we can those qualities that are, are special. Recognizing that change is a constant that we will all experience throughout our lives. But we're trying to manage that as best But we're trying to manage that as best we can through this process. So, and we update the plan every eight to ten years. We also revisit it occasionally. We do amendments on an annual basis if, if we feel there's a reason for, a good reason for that. Those all go through the Planning Commission and then are approved by the City Council. So there's a lot that goes into this. We're part of the bigger picture, and that's really the main point that, that I wanted to get across in this slide. And maybe now would be a good time, Nathan, to take the, the slides down and see if there are any questions on what we've talked about so far.
Okay.
Any questions at all?
Not seeing any from commissioners or Landmark Board members or?
Okay. We will, we'll resume the presentation then. We'll have other opportunities for questions later on as we go along as well.
So, this is Dave Boyd again. So the Comprehensive Plan begins with a robust community vision that's based on a, a set of shared values. And it sets forth nineteen individual visions covering a broad range of aspirations for the community. And we didn't want to put all of those. It's, it, it takes two pages, but it is sort of the preamble to the entire Comprehensive Plan and, and sets the, the stage for, for the Comprehensive Plan. Next. I'm gonna talk, I've got a couple of slides with downtown overview. The Downtown Subarea Plan and Regulations were adopted in two thousand and nine. That happened to be our centennial year. And so we took as kind of a byline of our, the downtown revitalization, planning efforts, building on our first century and designing our second. It was a robust three-year, actually it was closer to four years altogether, the community engagement process, where we asked for volunteers to serve on a downtown stakeholders resource board, resource group. And we actually got fifty-four applications for that. And we accepted sixteen and then we also accepted the, the remaining applicants onto Downtown Visioning Committee. And all were invited to take part in a series of roundtables on various topics that the Downtown Plan covered. So, so there was a, a, a large amount of, of community effort for the Downtown Plan. It resulted in a form, what's called a form-based zoning code. And, and that is a code that's really pays more attention to the built form than the uses. And actually, for the most part encourages a mix of uses or, or some flexibility in terms of the uses. But tries to make sure that the built form is cohesive and adds up to more than the, the sum of its individual parts. It also included a planned action environmental impact statement. And what, what that does is it basically says that any development that occurs in the Downtown Plan that is consistent with, with the Downtown Plan Regulations doesn't have to go through its own environmental review under, under the State Environmental Policy Act. That helps facilitate development and, and reduce, reduces for developers the, the liability of, of getting caught in, in appeals of their development approvals. We feel that that was a significant, has been a significant, significant factor in, in facilitating the development that we've seen to date. Because before the Downtown Plan, much of the downtown area, in fact, a, a larger area than is currently zoned for six stories, was zoned for sixty-five foot heights. We actually concentrated that in the downtown core. And, and also concentrated the most precious downtown retail uses in, in that core area. It's been amended several times since adoption, since it was such a, a different type of zoning code. There has been some, some need for adjustment. We've learned along the way and we're continuing to try to make that better. And, and we're gonna be dealing with one of those potential amendments later tonight. Next. Some of the recent efforts in downtown are the addition of affordable housing requirements and incentives in, in some of the downtown areas. And that's, again, is one of the things that we're looking at later this evening. And strengthening historic preservation and public space regulations. The image on this slide is, again, of the downtown subarea. And in the middle, the dashed, the green dashed line is what is called the downtown special review area. So, and, and the other colored blocks are areas that have properties on the, on various historic registers, state, local, national, or, or state, local, or national. In the downtown special review area, any significant project in, in that area is required to go to the Landmark Preservation Board for a, an advisory review. Sarah, anything you'd like to add there?
No, that covers it for now, I think.
And this year, the, the main efforts within the downtown are the exploration of additional affordable housing provisions. As I said, we're dealing with later this evening. And, and then the, later in this year, we're planning to make application to become a designated, that should be a designated countywide center, which is a, a new, would be a new designation for the city of Bothell. And would happen actually with the Comprehensive Plan Update in twenty twenty-four. But King County is, is starting that process this year with an application process. So if successful, then we'll have the Regional Growth Center in Canyon Park and we'll have a countywide center in downtown, which again will make us more competitive when it comes to applying for, for grant monies, primarily for transportation projects. Next. This goes back to Mike.
I think that one is me.
Oh, that's you, sorry.
That's okay. Just briefly, I'll talk about roles. The Landmark Preservation Board and the Planning Commission have similar roles. You know, one of your most important roles is really to just be informed so that you can make decisions that are best for the city. Read all of the materials presented in your agenda packets, check your city email accounts at least once a week, ask questions, ask for clarification or for more information if, if you're unsure. Consider public feedback because you are making decisions, you know, on behalf of the citizens. Both the Landmark Board and the Planning Commission are advisory bodies only, which we've mentioned, I think. The City Council will often follow your recommendations, but ultimately they're the final decision makers. As far as city staff goes, we're here to prepare all the materials for you, assemble information that will help you to understand issues and to make those informed decisions. We'll give you analysis and background information, options and recommendations as well. Staff will also coordinate community engagement opportunities and engage stakeholders and just inform the general public. And we'll assist with formulating your recommendations to the City Council. And I will turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Sarah. And, and we're down to the last couple of slides. So if you'll just indulge us just a little bit longer, and I've got the, the fun job of going over some of the really exciting administrative information for all of you. So both, both bodies have bylaws. We will provide you with a copy of the bylaw so that you're familiar with that. Those are really more about your operating procedures, elections, attendance, those kinds of things. Sarah mentioned the agenda packets. Those will be provided to you ahead of the meetings. Our goal is to get those out to you the Thursday before your meeting. In the case of the Landmark Board, I think sometimes we try to get out a date earlier because you meet on Tuesdays, the last Tuesday of the month. Planning Commission meets twice a month, the first and third Wednesdays of the month. And we try to get the packets out to the Commission on Thursday. And then also post those, all of the packets, all the materials are put on the city's website. And then we have what we call the Imagine Bothell Notice that goes out to an email distribution list to all subscribers, letting them know when the packet is available and what's coming up in the next meeting. Attendance is very important for a couple of reasons. Typically, these issues carry over several different, several meetings in a row. And it's important to attend those meetings so that you're familiar with the information that's presented. Also, the discussion of your fellow board and commission members and any comments that you receive from the public. We understand people have lives outside of the boards and commissions and you're not gonna make every meeting. We understand that. We ask that if you are not gonna be able to make the meeting, that you please notify the, the chair and the, the staff contact. So for the Landmark Board, that's Sarah. For the Planning Commission, that's myself. If you can give us as much advance notice as possible, then you'd have an excused absence from the Board or Commission meeting that you're not able to attend. And if, we may also suggest then, if you're not able to attend that meeting, that you take the time later on to, to either watch the meeting for the Planning Commission, since it is video recorded. And Sarah, do we have an audio recording of the Landmark Board or is it just the, just the minutes for that?
We don't typically do an audio, audio recording.
Okay. But there will be minutes for that. And if you want to get caught up on what happened at the meeting, I would encourage you to contact Sarah. And then she can give you just a summary so that you're prepared when you come into the next meeting. We don't, we do keep track of attendance just generally, just to make sure. The other reason the attendance notification is important is if for some reason we drop below a quorum, then we cannot conduct business. And we need to issue a cancellation notice for that meeting. We have to notify the public as well. And we want to give them as much advance notice as possible. So we would appreciate your cooperation in that regard. The OPMA is the Open Public Meetings Act. This is a state law that you'll get more information about. You all have to take that training if you haven't already. You're, you're required to take that as a new Board or Commission member. And that gives you background and what our requirements are is that we have to meet as a city in terms of providing notification of upcoming meetings, what's on the agenda, making sure that we're providing that adequate notification and that there are no meetings that are occurring outside of the regularly scheduled meetings. And that can take the form of a conversation between a quorum of members. If you all happen to go out to dinner together and there's four of you, you really cannot talk about any business that comes before the Board or Commission. That would be considered an illegal meeting. So please don't do that. Likewise, a, a series of emails among four or more Board or Commission members would be a serial meeting, which is also not allowed. And again, you'll get more information on that, but please pay very close attention to that. It's something that, that we stress very strongly in terms of, of our requirements and the state requirements for that. I already talked about quorum concerns and again, outside meetings as well. If, quite often what we, what we see is there may be a training session that's coming up or a, a guest speaker in another jurisdiction or something like that, and there's interest on part of Board and Commission members to attend that. If you can let us know when you're going to do that, if you think there are other Board or Commission members that will be present. So if there are going to be four of you, we do publish a notice of that as a special meeting, just so you know. So that's helpful for us to know if, if, what your plans are in terms of that, as it relates to your, your role as a Board or Commission member. And then email, and again, you'll hear a little bit more about this. Sarah mentioned, please check your email. You should all have a city email. That is the official email address that we use to provide the information to you or any other notices that we have to do as far as follow-up, like the last-minute comments that we may receive from the public prior to the meeting. Those will all go to your city email because those are all, that's all public record. And we want to keep that all available to the public if that information is ever requested. So, again, treat that as, as a public, a public document that is available for, for public viewing. So, the last item is the Planning Docket. This is an annual list of tasks that we prepare. We bring this before, before all of you, just for input. We don't ask for a recommendation, but we do talk to you about what's coming up for the next year, what we anticipate as staff. These could be things that have carried over from previous years. Quite often on the planning side, there are things that we are required to do by the state. So we list all of these. We do an estimate of, of just how many hours we think it will take the staff to do those. And we bring that to the City Council with a recommendation in terms of which ones we think we can accomplish within the next year. And that becomes the work program, not just for the staff, but also for the Board and Commission. There was a question that popped up earlier from, from one of the attendees about the Historic Preservation Program, seemingly very Eurocentric. I think that's a, an accurate and astute observation. That's also very typical of Historic Preservation Programs and something that we are working to rectify. Sarah, if you want to talk just a little bit about, one of the Landmark Board's tasks for this upcoming year is telling Bothell's full story?
Sure, yeah. It's, it's based off of an initiative by the National Trust for Historic Preservation called hashtag Tell the Full Story, which is just looking to recognize history from all points of view, all communities. And there were certainly people here before, you know, the Europeans settled here. And there have been many different, different people here. And the Landmark Board is really interested in sort of uncovering that history and expanding the historical narrative, you know, the accepted narrative that we tell about who founded Bothell. So look for more information on that. It's still in development, but once we really get it narrow, or, you know, narrowed down and, and in the works, you'll definitely hear more about it.
Thank you, Sarah. And some of the other things that are listed there, for, I've just highlighted a few things for each, each group. The Landmark Board, the rest of those are really pretty standard tasks for the year and Sarah does a lot of that and then, and brings that to the, the Board for your, your approval. In terms of the Planning Commission, the, the focus this year is, we have many tasks before us, but the real focus is gonna be on the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Implementation that Nathan will be working on. The Housing Strategy Implementation that Dave is working on in addition to the Downtown Subarea Plan Implementation, which has been ongoing, as Dave mentioned, for about the last ten years. And then we have other amendments that we'll be doing to the Bothell Municipal Code over the course of the year that will also come before the Planning Commission. So those are just a few of the highlights, and I think that is our last slide before additional questions. So Nathan, if you could take that down and see if, if we've generated any interest in questions or if we've just completely worn everyone down.
Before we go to the questions, there was a comment in, in the chat that one participant, James, was asking if anyone else could hear what I was saying. Did, did others have trouble hearing my presentation? Okay. Good to know.
Any questions?
So, from the Planning Commission or from the Landmark Board rather, Mr. Al Cabra?
Yeah, thank you. It's a very simple question. I know I saw people pointing that way, but I was that way. Just a question. Is this presentation going to get shared with us, the, the deck itself, to our city emails?
Yes, we can certainly provide that to you. Yes, be happy to.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. It's all, it's also been recorded. It's on video, so it's available for viewing on the city's YouTube channel.
Dr. Cotman, I, issue I'd like to have you address, if not here, then in the orientation later. Social media, there are a number of groups, specifically on Facebook, that I'd say most of the commissioners participate in. And you have a, say a few words about any concerns there regarding issues coming up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That, that is an important point, and I think that will be covered some more in that OPMA training. But yes, that is another area where the, the, the Commission or the Board could run a file of the Open Public Meetings Act. If you're all on a, a chat, a Facebook, even if it's a chain that occurs over several days, and four or more of you are talking about the same issue and it's an issue that will come before the Board, Board or Commission or has, that could be considered a, a serial meeting that would not be allowed under the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you.
And if you want to know more about that, if you, if you, after you've taken the training, if you want more information about that, if you want more information about that, we can also bring in the city attorney to, to do some more discussion with, with the Board of the Commission.
Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you, Chair. Director Cotterman, I wanted to clarify, because I had some questions about that after my orientation last year. So, being in the group is okay, but if there's a specific post or chat about a topic that's going to come before your Board or Commission, we don't want more than three commissioners participating in any way, right? We don't want there to be a discussion. Is that accurate?
I, I'd say that's accurate, and that, yeah, and, and there may, there's also the perception, which is another thing to be very cognizant of. So even if you're within the requirements of the OPMA, if there's a perception that there is a group of Board or Commission members that are, are meeting or making decisions, or, you know, doing the work of the Board outside of the regular meetings, that could, that's also a concern.
Absolutely. And I've just adopted that-
But it's, it, it just doesn't look good.
Yeah, and I, I realize I've only been on the, the Commission for one year, so I'll give you this advice with a grain of salt there, but I've just not made a point of participating in discussions about things that could come before the Planning Commission. You're already on the Commission, you have a voice, just let everybody else discuss it.
And, and I think that's the, that's the safest and most sensible way to approach it, is, you know, an abundance of caution in those circumstances. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
And, and I don't know if it's a good analogy or not, but I, I too track a number of these groups, and I kind of view it as reading a newspaper, where you're collecting information, but I'm not participating and engaging beyond that. And I hope and think that keeps us from running afoul. But this is kind of a brave new world that I think we need to be a little careful on.
There are certainly some new and different challenges than what we faced in the past, yes. And, and the important thing, the bottom line for all of this is really just to make sure that the, the public's work is being done in public. It's about the transparency. And we want to make sure that the work that's being done by the Board and Commission, and the same rules apply to all the boards and commissions, as well as the city council, that, that's, all of that work is done transparently, it's done in full view of the public, so that, you know, there are no backroom deals or anything like that, which has happened in, in, in the past, you know, historically, in, in other parts of this country. So we want to, we want to keep it open and honest.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I have a, maybe a request for advice mainly from Chair Kiernan, but also from all Commissioner Dodd and all the members here. When it comes to commenting on social media, or city council meetings on items that may not be related to planning our landmarks, but are very important to us, what are some ways and things to keep in mind? Because I know I make my opinions pretty well-known on all kinds of media about things that do not come before the Planning Commission, but do affect the city. What are some things to keep in mind?
Boy, I'd be inclined to defer to Director Cotterman on that. You know, from my past experience with open public meetings, we need to stay away from the business of the Commission. We have a role as commissioners, and a duty to the public to conduct that role in the appropriate manner, which involves notice of those meetings. But I, I think as citizens, we also have voices on other matters. You know, if, if you were, if any of us were to speak before the council, for instance, on, on an issue, I, I think it would be useful to state who you are, including Planning Commissioner, and I suspect the council members would know that, but for the public, that would be useful. But then I, my opinion is, there would be no bar to expressing your opinion on, on other matters, either before the council or anywhere else. And Director Cotterman, I'd welcome your feedback on that as well.
I, I would agree with, with what you stated, Mr. Chair. And I would just add, if you do identify yourself as a member of a Board or Commission when you're speaking, either before the city council or any, any group, that you make it very clear you're not speaking for that body, because that is not your role. You know, that's, if there is an occasion where, that some, a member needs to speak on behalf of the body, and that happens sometimes at the city council meetings, for example, the chair will often attend when there's an item before the, the council that the Commission has made a recommendation on. And in that case, Chair Kiernan is speaking for the Planning Commission. But if he came before them as an individual, as a citizen, and you're not giving up any of your rights as a citizen, just because you're a member of a Board or Commission, you still have all the, you know, those rights and privileges. Just be clear that you're speaking for yourself.
Thank you for that clarification, I should have recalled that. And must, many of the commissioners will remember, we did have an issue, we did draft a statement to be presented to the council, and when I spoke, I made it clear that it was on behalf of the, the Commission, and we voted on that. And if any of us were to speak, I would say, you know, you are a commissioner, but you're speaking on your personal, expressing a personal opinion.
And if you ever have a question about whether something is appropriate, or allowed or not allowed under the OPMA, feel free to reach out to staff, and, you know, we'd be happy to, to give you what guidance we can, you know, we can put you in touch with the city attorney. The city attorney is not the attorney for the boards or commissions, but he can also often provide some guidance, or we can refer you to another resource.
And, and I would add, violations of the OPMA can be expensive to local jurisdictions. There have, there has been litigation around that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, should we bring this?
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I see Commissioner Dodd raising her hand.
I'm sorry, Chair, but thank you. I debated adding this, but I will say, I think this is such an odd time for all of the commissioners and board members, because we're meeting virtually. For those of us who haven't had in-person meetings, either in a long time or at all, I know a number of you started during the pandemic last year, and now this year. I think it's important to remember when talking to our neighbors in Bothell, that they depend on us to make decisions that, that benefit them, that benefit the city. So when you're engaging on social media, the, the biggest takeaway that you can have is just, how would you want someone on another Board or Commission where you depended on their answer for something to talk? You know, you want to engage in a way that inspires trust, and that doesn't leave people in question of your motives or your character. So Commissioner Gustafson, I hope that kind of dovetails with what you're asking, but I just, that's, that's what I would hope to see from everybody, and, and so far have seen. I don't have any concerns, I just wanted to say, that's, that's one thing to keep in mind. Thanks. Off my soapbox now.
And Mr. Chair, I was just going to add, if, if any of you have any questions later on that you think of, or if you would like any additional information, obviously, we did a 30,000-foot overview tonight, but if there's anything you want to, to know more about, please let us know, we'd be happy to, to put together some more information and come before your Board or Commission and, and present that. So really appreciate all of your time and your indulgence and patience as we work through this this evening. And I think at this point, Mr. Chair, the Landmark Preservation Board members, you're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting if you like. I will push you out into the attendee room, however, so that we can have a smaller number of people on the screen. But we certainly appreciate your, your attendance, and Sarah, again, we'll have more information for you specific to the Landmark Board at your meeting later this month.
And I'm going to suggest, if the other commissioners agree, that we take a 10-minute break before moving on to the other agenda item. And I see general consensus on that. So I've got 7:41 on my computer clock here, we'll reconvene at 7:51, taking a brief break right now, so see you all in a few minutes.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We are reconvening the April 7th meeting of the Bothell Planning Commission. This meeting is conducted via Zoom, which is fairly new to the commission. I think it's our third Zoom meeting. And just like to clarify that the chat is not a formal part of our proceedings, although we are doing our best to track what's going on there. And if people do want to comment, Senior Planner Boyd will talk a little more about that when he begins the next item. So our next item is a study session on the general downtown corridor, three-floor overlay and related code amendments. So with that, Dave, you want to take control?
Thank you and good evening. And I would start off by saying that this is a study session. This is a continued study session from March 3rd. Those, the video of all of these meetings is posted online. And so, and the public hearing will happen at the earliest in our, at our first meeting in May. It could happen later than that. So there will be ample opportunity to comment on this. And, and then it will, the planning commission recommendation will go to city council and there will be a public hearing there. So, so there, there are ample opportunities and again, any comments, substantive comments should be sent to david.bloyd@bothellwa.gov and they'll get entered into the public record. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. And
And Dave, I did bring Mike Stanger into the
Ah, yes. Okay. So these are the general downtown corridor, three-floor overlay code amendments. I may, as we move forward, shorten that just to GDC overlay code amendments. This, as I just said, this is a continuation of the March 3rd study session. The purpose tonight is to provide additional analysis and response to your comments. And to get additional feedback from the commission on the extent of the revised overlay, affordable housing provisions, including parking and micro housing issues. And on the housing issues, we are working with Mike Stanger of Regional Coalition for Housing, ARCH. And he is available to answer questions as they come up during tonight's meeting. Also attending is the applicant for these code amendments. These were private, privately requested code amendments. Bart Flora is with us and I will give him an opportunity to speak at the end of, of this, of the presentation. What's new in your packet and in this presentation, some of it may seem like a rehash, but I did want to include a lot of the material from, from the March 3rd memo and presentation for the benefit of the folks that are joining us tonight from the neighborhood. We have some additional information about the proposal and some context. I'd like to talk a little bit about micro housing's role. And although I don't want to, I want to make it clear that this, these code amendments aren't solely about micro housing. And we're trying to come up with code amendments that will apply to traditional style housing as well. But since the applicant's proposal is a micro housing proposal, we are focusing on that initially to some degree. Micro housing is, well, it's clear that we need more housing in, in Bothell and in, in the region. And we need a broad range of, of different types of housing to address different needs and then different affordability levels. Micro housing by its nature is relatively affordable because they are quite small units. And because of that, the, they are suitable and attractive as student housing, but they're also attractive for young professionals who are trying to save money in order to, to purchase housing. They're, they're used by professionals of all ages that are working at a, at a location where they, they don't want to invest in more expensive permanent housing. So it can be a, an option to say an extended stay hotel. So there are a lot of different people, including retirees that, that choose to use micro housing. I also wanted to, in terms of context, right on the, across the street, the star, the red star here shows the two parcels that are owned by the applicant and his, his development company or partnership. And right across from that is the Husky Village site. That is the subject of a redevelopment proposal that's starting to work its way through development review process at the city that will greatly expand the campus, the campuses, campus housing. And will really change the face of, of the campus to a much more urban face that fronts on Beardsley Boulevard. So I think that's important to, to understand in terms of a, the urban design of this corridor, that there is an argument to be made to allow higher development across from that to complement. In general, in, in the downtown zoning, we try to have similar zoning on, on either side of, of a street. And then probably one of the most significant things is our analysis of the special setbacks. Was a fairly simple map, but, and we talked about it last time, but we hadn't mapped it. So I'm going to spend some, some time going forward on that. In response to comments in the memo, there's, there were comments from the planning commission last time about the existing housing prices, particularly in some of the developments that could potentially get displaced, redeveloped with these code amendments or, or even without the code amendments. There were questions about demographics. Unfortunately, the kind of fine-grained demographics that I think planning commissioners were interested in are, we haven't been able to find a source and I don't know that there exists a good source for that. And I wanted to acknowledge a new exhibit six that was emailed to commissioners on Monday from Chad Rupameso, who has a property that abuts the applicant's properties to the, to the northwest. And then even in our, in our, as a result of tonight's meeting, I just got an email from someone who commented in, in the chat or in the Q and A function here, who at my request, sent his comments by email. And, and so those will be added to the public record as well. And then on affordability, we do see a need to provide for downtown's service and student population with affordable housing. And I just want to say that that analysis is ongoing. We, we have in the memo and in my presentation tonight, I'll talk in broad terms about some of the approaches that we're, that we're analyzing, but we don't really have that to a point where we're providing any specific numbers in terms of percentages and/or affordability levels. That still needs a little more work. So that will come at the next, at the next meeting. But I hope that we have some additional information that'll solicit additional feedback from commission. So as we did at the last session, make some adjustments to my screen here so I can see the graphics. We presented five potential blocks to consider. And we did some initial analysis of their development potential, the impacts on adjacent uses, proximity to campus and to transit and the infrastructure impacts. The planning commission at the March 3rd meeting chose to keep all of those blocks on the table for public noticing. So a public notice, a postcard was sent to the, this whole area, A, B, C, D, E, plus a 500-foot buffer around the area. In addition, the applicant has placed public notice boards on Beardsley in front of one of their parcels and at the southeast or southwest corner of Valley View and Circle Drive, since those two, the, the, they're basically two contiguous areas, A, B, C, D, and then E is, is separated by the Sunrise Valley View neighborhood. The, the postcard mailing was really a courtesy notice. This type of action doesn't require a mail notice, but we thought it was appropriate since this is a code amendment that, that will apply to a discreet area. And in response to many of the comments that we got from neighbors of area E, we tried to explain that, that that was put on the table for analysis and public notices, notice by the planning commission on March 3rd, but it was not part of the applicant's proposal. He proposed that these amendments apply to block A and staff presented the, the option of considering all of these areas to planning commission. And again, the decision was to keep them on the table for now. And I'll, I'll be asking for more direction on, on the extent as we go forward. One of the key factors and one area that we've done some significant additional analysis is on the special setback requirements. The current zone and the current zoning for all general downtown corridor areas and any other zones in downtown that either abut, single-family zoning or are directly across the street from single-family zoning require some special setbacks. Abutting, a single family, there is a 29-foot setback, 25 feet of which has to be a landscape buffer, specified landscape buffer. So that's shown here in the image to the left. And then from that 29-foot setback, there's an additional 65-foot upper level setback before the structure can, could go up to four floors, if, if four floors were allowed. And, and that would still be in place if amendments were made to allow four floors in this area. Across the street from single-family zoning, again, at the 20-foot front setback, the building height would be limited to three floors. And if a fourth floor is allowed, it would have to be set back from that point, 65 feet. In addition to that, there's a provision in the general downtown corridor that would allow a development to reduce its front setback from 20 down to as little as five. If that would help move the overall building, it would have to be accompanied by an equal increase in the rear setback. And it applies only where the topography slopes up to the single-family area. So the effect would be it would allow the building to be moved down the hill and away, so it would be relatively lower and further away from the single-family zoning. Currently, that only applies to adjacencies to single-family zones. One thing that we are going to be asking the, the commission to consider is allowing that to apply to existing single-family development, even if it's in the same zone. So the, I guess the big new piece that's in your packet is this map showing, mapping out those special setback requirements. Again, they only apply to parcels directly abutting or across the street from single-family zones, not single-family construction. And as you'll see in some areas, around the applicant's properties, for example, since their properties don't actually abut any single-family zoning, those special setbacks don't extend onto that property. So there are intervening parcels in between those parcels and, and the single-family zoning along Ross Road north of 187. These setbacks would significantly limit any capacity increase that would result from removing the three-floor overlay and allowing four, four floors in this area, as is allowed in the rest of the general downtown corridor. And, and that may make affordable housing incentives more appropriate than requirements. That's something that we, we, we'd need to study further. But we'd also be interested in hearing the commission's thoughts on, on anything specific to that that, that they would like to request that we look into further. So basically, in the properties that abut Beardsley Avenue So basically, in the properties that abut Beardsley Avenue and 185th directly, for the most part, aren't going to be affected by that, at least the developable parcels. They do apply to some of the property that's already been developed. The parcels along Ross Road, for example, or abutting Sunrise Valley View or Circle Drive would have a significant the addition of an addition or the ability to add, go to four floors instead of three, in many cases would be negated entirely, excuse me, or severely limited. So that's a new a new piece of information. And and I'm including maps showing this, these setbacks in each of the more detailed looks at at these these five blocks that were that are under consideration. So with that, I'm going to pause for a second and see if there are any questions at this point.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I wanted to clarify what exactly is the change between the previous code setbacks and the code setbacks as proposed? My understanding is that the only change is that the setback could be moved from the front to the rear for these setbacks that are abutting single family homes. And otherwise, there's no proposed change.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'll I'll try to explain that a little, show you which parcels that that could apply to.
It would be great to know how many parcels that applies to. Thank you.
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thanks. I only have green and I hope that'll work. It's a paint chip. So I want to make sure I understand this clearly. There's a 24 foot setback where these zones abut, single family. And is that correct? Or is it 29 or 24 feet?
29 feet.
29.
Setback of which 24 feet needs to be.
There we go. 29 feet. But in single family, I believe the Bothell maximum height for top plate is 35 feet. Is that right? I think it's 35, isn't it, for a single family zone?
30 to 35, depending.
35, depending on slope. And our side setbacks in single family, I think, are five feet, right? Or do we do the 15 distributed on either side? I can't remember, Dave. Is it five as a minimum?
Minimum five feet, combined 15.
Right. So a little stump, we make anything that's going to be in these three floor overlay zones, we sort of penalize them, even if they're going to be the same height as a single family home. Single family homes can be within five feet and they can go to 35 feet, at least 30, which is three stories. Whereas these, which are arguably often going to have more units and house more people, get penalized, they have to be 29 feet back. That's a lot of land. Some lots are only 60 feet wide. That's half the lot. It's totally unusable, unproductive for creating housing when they're really going to be the same height, often three fours, as a single family home. So we're really somehow giving single family homes special dispensation. They can go to three stories, but a multi-unit cannot do that. And I think that I find that kind of incongruous, something that just caught my eye. I'd be curious what other people think of that.
Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Westerbeck makes a good point. I also worry that if our goal is more affordable housing, we might want to look at when the more situations, especially for like deep affordability, where the setbacks can be reduced to let the developer build more units with hopefully as many as possible being dedicated for deep affordable housing as a compromise on the setbacks. It concerns me that we might be losing some affordability because of the setbacks in this very walkable, very, you know, transit accessible neighborhood. Because it really speaks to the presentation earlier that it's students, but it's also non-students who are working in the city, who maybe want to live without, you know, three roommates in a three bedroom or whatever it is, like it, you know, there's a lot of different life stages that would find micro units like this affordable and the right the right option. And I don't want to just push more people out of the city because of affordability. So that and that's what I hope we're all addressing here. So I I agree, is the short answer there.
Yeah, that's the cost of land right now downtown. I've checked recently, it's about $115, $125 a square foot for raw land. It's very expensive. So to to have a property where you want to maybe contribute housing and you can't use almost 30 feet of it, it's a real blow if you're trying to make a pencil, how a building pencil out and you've got to think about parking and everything as well. And I actually lived in what will be considered old fashioned micro housing on Capitol Hill in the late 80s, early 90s. And one space I first lived in was about 120 square feet. And I absolutely loved it. It was I had the time of my life living there and it didn't bother me to live in a small space. I was gone a lot anyway, and even when I was there, it was quite nice. So I think people should reserve judgment about how the other people would like to live. A lot of people really appreciate those those units very much and like living in them, enjoy them. Thanks.
Other commissioner comments, questions, Commissioner Alderks.
I would also add to, sorry, Commissioner Alderks here. I would also add to Commissioner Westerbeck's point that there are many life stages that would benefit from these, you know, micro apartments and the deeper affordability that we're talking about. And that includes kids who are, you know, graduating from college and trying to come back to Bothell. In talking to members of the community, there's a lot of concern that young people, once they've graduated and want to come back home to their hometown, that they're squeezed out in terms of pricing and affordability. And then also, you know, people who are pre having children to just to find, you know, an affordable place where they can be in community with others and not feel isolated. And, you know, large tract homes can and can really strengthen the sense of community cohesion. And so there are some real benefits to people across the lifespan for projects like this. So I would add that as some thoughts.
Commissioner Robson.
Just I I think I just want some context for the original code there. Is the idea to to have these setbooks? What's the what was the original intention? What are they trying is that what are they trying to preserve? Is that a noise boundary to protect single family homes from more noisy living situations? Is that aesthetics? Is that, can somebody give me some context for why that code? What the thinking behind that original policy that might maybe we're not considering?
Yes, I can do that and answer some of the other questions. It might be easiest to do that if I go back to my presentation and can illustrate that. But to address Commissioner Robson's comment, the those special setbacks actually predate the downtown plan. They were part of a planning effort. Not I don't I can't, I don't know the exact year. It was before I started here at Bothell. But I think it was not too long before the downtown plan. And it was it was an effort that was dubbed the Campus Corridor. And that's when this 29 foot setback with with 24 feet of landscaping was established. It wasn't part of the original proposal for the downtown zoning, but there was a lot of, we did get a lot of a comment in the downtown plan about the need to provide, to maintain that kind of a buffer from the single family, between the single family neighborhoods and and more dense multifamily development.
Commissioner Robson.
So just to make sure, just clarify. So this campus corridor, it was to keep it was to to keep a boundary from the college abutting up residential innocence? Is that the is that the idea? And I don't I don't mean to be sarcastic, I'm just to not to establish a barrier there? There is it was that the?
I wouldn't call it a barrier. I'd call it a buffer that would, and you asked about, is it aesthetic? Is it privacy? I think we heard from some of the folks that commented earlier, it has to do with both of those, having apartments that can can look down into single family backyards. And while we do allow single family development up to 35 feet, most single family development in Bothell and adjacent to these areas isn't. It's typically one to two stories. And so there is a scale differential. And and so that was that was the reason behind that. And we're, our intention isn't to put that on the table as something to modify at this point. And the applicant didn't ask to modify those regulations. But it is certainly a factor that when we look at the applying affordable housing, either requirements or incentives, the fact that that adding a fourth floor doesn't add a lot of capacity to some of these properties, I think, is relevant. We also got one. Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you. Real quick, not quite on the same chain. I feel like it's been too long since we talked about downtown public space. Would developments in any of these zones, A, B, C, D, E, require public open space? Or is it too far from downtown downtown?
No, they do require public open space.
Okay.
Or it's actually the heart of downtown, the downtown core that doesn't have a public space.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that refresher.
Commissioner Alderks.
I specifically, sorry, Commissioner Alderks here. I specifically have questions about Lot E, especially since we are hearing from members of the community. What is the timeframe to redevelop that area? Since as far as I understand, there are no proposed developments there. And so it's it's sort of a, we're looking to the future. But how far in the future are we looking at redeveloping that that land on Lot E?
That's not up to us. That's up to the owners of those properties. So we can we can analyze what the likelihood of redevelopment is. That's usually a factor of what's what's actually developed there. One tool is improvements to land value. But and that's part of the analysis that I'll get into in the block by block analysis that I'm going to dive into next. If I can go back, I'll go back to my shared screen here.
Okay, please do.
Okay, are you seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, is that where I was? Yes, it is. I also wanted, before I delve back in, I wanted to go backwards.
Think that is a little further along than you were.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I had two windows open, but let me go back to this.
Yes.
This diagram. So I think this fairly accurately shows a typical scale comparison of single family to three to four story multifamily. So the, so you do have the special setback when it's actually abutting, the 29 foot setback, mostly landscaped. But you also have this upper level setback. So even if we do remove the the three floor overlay and allow development up to four floors, the idea is that the the scale of the development that's that you perceive from the adjacent single family is similar to what you would have if if somebody maxed out the single family zoning and built three stories and 35 feet. Similarly, when it's across the street that you're looking at a building that's closer in scale to what you what could be built in the single family zone. I also got on chat a question about how we define four stories. And the question was, could it be four stories of housing over two stories of parking garage? And we only allow, a level of parking will count as a story if it extends more than five feet above grade. So the intent is is no, that that you could have, essentially, you could have four and a half stories with that provision. I think there was one other question that I oh, it was a question about the variable setback. And my trying to look for a good option. And it would be probably be helpful if this showed the contours. But I, one other thing I'd like to pass on from from chat, I think it was in either in one of the verbal comments or one of the written comments. But it was a request from somebody in that Sunrise Valley View neighborhood for commissioners to go out and and walk this zone and get a better feel for for the character of the zone. And I suspect many of you have. But I do think that's that is a worthwhile exercise. Whenever you're doing a code amendment.
Yeah, Commissioner Alderks.
Sorry to interrupt, Dave.
Hi, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I do think it would be helpful for the commissioners if you were to turn your the slides into presentation mode. Because right now, it's just smaller than we can really see.
What, at the beginning of the presentation, were they showing full screen?
They were. And then after we got back from discussion, now we see the, you know, the sidebar that has the tiny slides and then this slide that is not is not full screen for us.
Better?
Yes, that is much better. Thank you very much.
Still having some difficulty advancing, but here we go. So let's move on to block A and I'll try to illustrate the the setback, the variable setback requirement. Maybe it'll be easier, well, maybe the if we look at the Beardsley building, even though this was built prior to the downtown plan, it probably was built after the the 29 foot setback, landscape setback was established. And and just imagine that that this building comes closer than than 20 feet to the the street. Because it backs on single family zoning, we would have, there's a discretionary approval available to allow them to move closer to the street up to five feet if the result of that is increasing the rear setback and and making the building lower than the adjacent single family due to the topography. So that applies where it's adjacent, where a development backs up on single family zoning. It doesn't currently apply to these parcels that back up on relatively new single family development. This little development here was built after the downtown plan. So they chose to, instead of building multifamily, to build So they they chose to to, instead of building uh multifamily, uh, to build single-family uh uh development there. And since it's not adjacent to the single-family zone, they don't have that, that very, the way it's written right now, they don't have that uh variable setback uh option. Um, a few other things here I'd point out, uh, again, we talked about this last time. Much of this area A is is developed and we is not likely to redevelop. The Beardsley Building, the Beardsley South Town Homes. So the the parcels and also this new uh single-family development uh off of Ross Road. Uh, so the 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 main opportunity for new development uh under uh these proposed uh amendments is are these four lots, including the applicant's two lots um opposite Husky Village and a single lot that was a holdout from the the Beardsley South Town Homes project up there uh adjacent to uh adjacent to the uh Villas Beardsley uh Development, as it's called now. And and the the sort of complex geometry of that setback uh due to the fact that we've got uh small lots and lots that are uh aren't directly adjacent to the single-family zoning is is shown here. Uh, so again, the 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 properties, properties like uh um this one, these, well, actually, this is in in subarea B, so I'm gonna cover those later. But uh, the properties uh that abut on Beardsley often in this case uh aren't impacted uh by that uh setback. At least the the properties that aren't developed, uh recently developed now. Uh, moving forward. So just uh again, some photographs uh of Block A. Uh, across the top are uh photographs of the applicant's properties uh from two angles. They currently have single-family homes on them. Uh, on the lower uh row, uh, on the bottom left is a former single-family home that's been converted into an adult family home. In the middle is a a large lot, single-family home. And on the right is that holdout property between uh the Beardsley uh South condominiums and the Villas Beardsley uh Development. And off of Ross Road, again, you're uh across Ross Road is uh R ninety-six uh hundred zoning uh relatively large lot, single-family. And this is the the development that's in the general downtown corridor, three-floor overlay, but uh where the develop developer uh chose to build uh a single-family housing there. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause there just so we can have a little bit of a discussion focused on on Block A. And so I'll stop sharing again. Do we need? Oh, uh, the one other thing, question that I I wanted to respond to um. Uh, Commissioner Westerbeck is right that um that uh the single-family, there there are situations where you might have a single-family with a side yard uh adjacent to uh the multifamily, the the GDC zoning. But more typically, uh, it'll be a rear yard setback, which is um typically fifteen to twenty feet.
So Commissioner, questions or comments uh specifically to Section A here? And that is the one where the microhousing is proposed?
Yes.
Seeing none, I guess you can proceed.
Okay. Oh, no, we're back to this.
I I would have one small question.
Go ahead.
Or comment. It really relates to uh my earlier, it's a setback question again, or comment. Um, sixty-five feet for that fourth floor, again, where you were making a lot of that fourth floor totally unusable, that area. Um, and I can't help but think about, you know, as an architect, we look at, you guys did a lot of studies uh for the for the um the stuff that Uda Bothell was building next to single-family um homes. Did a lot of the the view studies, looking at, you know, what it was like to stand in the yard and look at a um a tall building next door and and it helps size the buffers and things like that. And I can't, you know, I did a little diagram myself and um, you know, if you're standing in someone's backyard or in your house and you're looking over at that three, that four-story building, um, sixty-five feet um is a lot more than what be would be needed to to make it feel like it's receding or it's back. Um, I think it could be fifteen or twenty feet and still solve the the issue, the sort of making it feel smaller visually, standing in someone's yard or sitting in their house. So I don't know where the sixty-five feet came from, but it seems really excessive. Just a comment, I I think it could be a third of that and do the job. So that was my only comment. Thanks.
I think we um, I think we uh looked at uh um less uh lesser setbacks. Uh, one, one of the rationales for the sixty-five feet was that um that's roughly the the width of a double-loaded, you know, multifamily corridor project. So um you wouldn't necessarily have a uh a building that that steps back sixty-five feet and then then uh goes up to a solid building going up to uh four floors at that point. It might be more likely that um, for example, if you look at these, these are townhomes, so they're they're lower projects. But uh this row of townhomes would be limited to thirty-five feet and this this row would uh uh be able to go to uh four floors and forty-five feet.
Sure.
That was part of the thinking there.
Yeah.
So uh here we are in uh in uh Block B. Uh, again, uh, as I mentioned before, there are there's really only a s- one uh significantly underdeveloped parcel. This this parcel here, just uh west of the Campus View Apartments, is a, has a single-family house on it. We've had a permit application for uh multifamily on that uh parcel that I uh has lapsed. Uh, but there are some other properties that uh potentially could redevelop. Um, uh, the um uh one- and two-story um uh commercial buildings with the um Montessori school and a daycare uh along one eighty-fifth uh potentially. Uh, but you can see in the uh map to the to the right that um uh even those properties are impacted by that uh upper-level setback. Uh, the this L-shaped property, prop might be able to take advantage of of the um uh of removing the three-floor setback, at least on the portion that fronts on on one eighty-fifth. Other than that, the Campus View Apartments and then um the uh apartment building um on Beardsley potentially could could benefit. Uh, they they both have um significant surface parking lots. Uh, so uh, but there there's a potential uh for uh redevelopment there um with uh uh replay, you know, building out the surface parking and and having structured parking. Uh, but um, but it's somewhat more limited in 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 Block B. And again, just uh, and the image is the daycare center, a two-story daycare center, one-story Montessori school on one eighty-fifth. And then the the fire station, a a big part of of Block B is the downtown fire station. So that's not going to um, uh, these code amendments won't affect that. That's uh going through the permitting process. And to the right, in this upper-right photo, is is um the Campus View Apartments. And then on the the backside, uh, if you will, of of Block B along Ross Road, the the single-family lot is down this driveway. Uh, there's an apartment building uh uh to the, on the left side of the lower-left photo and some fairly new townhomes uh uh along Ross Road, behind the fire station and um not quite as new um multifamily development uh uh to the west of those. I'm gonna go ahead and go through these, uh, but feel free to jump in if the, if uh people want to talk about uh any of these individual blocks. Uh, I'll I'll stop sharing. Block C has a single uh property in the uh three-floor overlay. It's the Sunrise of Bothell Senior Center uh assisted living. Which is also probably um not as likely to redevelop, uh, even though the the building is mostly in the west portion of the lot. Uh, it has surface parking and a uh large uh open space. Uh, so in theory, um, the the that the portion that is o- open space and parking is the portion that would be affected by the upper-level setback. So uh, and the the building itself is, I believe, two stories. And um, so there is some additional room, even with the three-story zoning and and would be more if if four stories were allowed. Uh, but I don't know that that it would be enough to uh make it uh worth redeveloping that property. And Block D, um, here, uh, the two of the properties aren't direct, uh, do not abut the single-family zoning um to the south. Uh, so uh, they're not affected by that upper-level setback. Uh, the other two properties are substantially affected by the upper-level setback and and the and the twenty-nine-foot setback. And uh, there were some questions about the, about the topography change. And there's about forty-five feet from Beardsley Boulevard up to the level of of where the single-family are um homes are uh to the south. Uh, so there is, that would also mitigate uh to, I think, to a significant degree the the impact of of new development, whether it's three stories or four stories uh on these properties. And then uh Block E, um, two condominium projects uh flank uh Valley View uh just uh west of one hundred and eighth and Circle Drive. And uh, since they are condominium projects, uh redevelopment is uh difficult to say the least. Uh, either all of the owners would have to agree uh or would have to agree to to sell uh sell their property. So that's unlikely to happen. Uh, the Morning Star Condominiums uh on the northwest corner um don't have a lot of uh surface parking area. Um, so uh, there's, there's not a whole lot, lot of redevelopment opportunity there. The LaRive Condominiums on on the southwest corner do have surface parking uh to the west and then public open space. Uh, so there is some potential of redevelopment uh on that part of the site. But again, it would probably require all of the, all of the individual condominium owners to agree to that. And uh, the upper-level setbacks in both of those cases uh take a substantial amount of of uh the potential um redevelopment, especially in the area where where uh that I just spoke of, where it could happen. The same is true of the lots um to the south, uh, along Circle Drive. Um, the the first one is is entirely within that upper-level setback area. Uh, the only area that isn't is is the lower part uh down towards uh is R five twenty-two. So with the three-floor height limit, as as the land slopes away, uh, that three-floor limit uh could require a building that would step down uh with the land. Adding the fourth, or uh removing the three-four floor overlay and allowing uh the downhill side to go to four stories might enable them to do a full, uh, to not step down with land uh if those properties were redeveloped. But again, uh, we think the the likelihood of redevelopment on these parcels is is fairly low.
And and Dave, those, go back for just a second. Now, those three parcels to the south that are not in condominium, are are those fairly steep slopes?
Uh, fairly steep, uh, and I think that the steepness increases as you go down so that the the houses uh come up close to the street um and and then the backyards do fall away further. And and one of those lots, it's uh not terribly apparent uh here. Actually, the the GDC zoning goes through all to five twenty-two. But that lower side of five twenty-two is um uh uh has a retaining wall or and and quite steep slopes and um uh may well be within the limited access area uh of uh five twenty-two that extends from the uh four oh five interchange. Uh, so I, we, I haven't really uh done a detailed analysis, but whether they could even get access from five twenty-two is is um questionable.
Thank you.
So here, uh, given the additional analysis and feedback that the the we have received, uh, are there any of these areas that should be taken out of uh uh consideration at this time? Um, and is the main question I have. And then um, given those, the impact of the upper-level setbacks, there are two options for allowing additional height with an affordability provision. Uh, one would be a mandatory provision that only applied to the the areas that are uh either aren't uh affected or uh or not severely affected by the upper-level setbacks, which uh would mostly be the parcels along Beardsley and one eighty-fifth uh in A, B, C, and or D. Uh, so basically, it would be a, it wouldn't be all of all of those areas, but just a portion of of those um of those blocks. Or we could apply this um the ability to go to a fourth floor and tie that to a voluntary incentive uh that would apply to the whole area uh with the understanding that the property is uh significantly impacted by the upper-level setback would not likely take advantage. But it would really be, again, up to the uh property owner to um determine whether whether there was enough additional capacity by being able to go to four floors, at least on the the downhill side of their property uh to um to apply for that and then um and then provide affordable housing according to the uh provisions that we that we establish. So with that, I'm gonna stop and have a little uh open it up for questions and discussion about uh whether, at this point in time, you're inclined to um take any of these blocks off the table and if you have any thoughts about the sort of the hybrid solution.
So let's let's try to take that first question first about whether any of those areas should be excluded, uh, any of the five areas. So Commissioner, thoughts on that? Commissioner Curd first?
Thanks, Chair. This is Karsten. Um, here's what I've been hearing from all these discussions so far. Is that redevelopment in most of these blocks is wildly unlikely to occur for the most part. Um, you won't see these upper, fourth-level um extensions from even the road outside the single-family neighborhoods. Um, there's little, if any, capacity increase with the setbacks that have been proposed that kind of neuter all the potential for um larger development to actually even occur. And the new development is still subject to the same rigors of the downtown code, which are extremely difficult to to meet um under any normal circumstance. So the reason why I am not looking to take anything off of the table here is because we need to ma- make sure that these are still flexible and able to meet um the demands of whatever the individual um development may require. And so each one of these lots has its own little particular weird aspects, whether it's the geology, the neighboring parcels, the historic cultural use of the site, or the neighborhood. Um, and so by increasing the development potential by ten feet, which is nothing, um, it adds a little bit more flexibility, which um should allow these um structures or these new structures in the next hundred years that we're using this plan for. these new structures in the next 100 years that we're using this plan for to to work with the natural areas, to work with the cultural and the existing uses. And so I I think that I'm still really in support of keeping all of these options on the table.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Dodd?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Commissioner Kerd. I think these were all really intelligently chosen areas based on where they are and kind of the, they're natural areas for higher-density housing. So I think it makes sense to keep studying all of them as we as we work through this.
Yes, Commissioner Westerbeck?
This is Commissioner Westerbeck. I think Commissioner Kerd really summed up my thoughts very well perfectly. There there's so many restrictions already that we really need to do this additional 10 feet, which I agree. If you build things 10 feet, it's not a whole lot. It's not really going to feel much different if something was 40 feet or four stories than three when you're standing on the ground. And if anything, so I would concur with everything Commissioner Kerd said. And I would also say, if anything, I someday, I think we should revisit those those setbacks. When you look at those mapped on these diagrams and see how much of this extremely precious and expensive land that is right in our downtown, where we really need to be putting people so they're closer to schools and jobs and and family and and have an opportunity to live in a fantastic city like ours, we're just taking a lot of it off the table by doing that. And I think it's a a little too much. So in that case, I would be in favor of the additional floor, the additional 10 feet, just so we can squeeze what we can out of this extremely precious land. Thanks.
Other commissioners? I guess I'd say I have a little concern about E, given the the fact that the the major parcels are in condominium and the likelihood of them being able to take advantage of this change is pretty minimal. And I continue to express concern about the steep slopes on the two, three remaining smaller parcels. So it I I I just question what effect they'll be of of moving forward with these, whether they will be developed. But that's that's my thought on it. Other commissioners? Also point out, we're five minutes to nine, and we may need to extend the meeting if if we we keep going. So Dave, you you heard on the parcels. Are you getting feedback you need on this?
Yes, and thank you for that.
Okay.
So let me move on. So affordable housing provisions is the next question. And actually, there there were a couple of questions on chat that I want to touch on quickly. One was, how do we measure the height? Say, particularly, there was a question about on the west part of the LaRive condominiums site, if if that were to redevelop. Height limit is measured from a base height, which is an average of the corners of the foot building footprint. So on a slope that, a site that slopes away from the street, just that will tend to limit the height of the of the street side of the of the development and allow somewhat taller building on on the backside, in that case, towards 522. On and on properties that slope up from the street towards single-family zoning, that me- method of measuring height tends to, again, minimize the height adjacent to the or toward the single-family zone and allow the full, if 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 the four-floor, if there were no three-floor overlay, would allow the full four four floors on the street, say, on Beardsley Boulevard. So I hope that answers that question. So getting to the affordability provisions.
Dave, let's pause for a minute. I think we're bumping up against nine. So I'd like to see if there is a motion to extend the meeting. And I'm thinking, given where we're at, 15 minutes.
About how much longer do you think, Dave, for your presentation?
Well, on the affordable housing provisions, that we we need to do some more analysis and to give you some more meat to to weigh in on. So I think I can go through that fairly quickly. And and then we can pick up on that with with a little more concrete analysis next round.
So would we, we would revisit this in another study session?
Yes, most likely, yes.
Okay. So maybe 10 minutes to wrap this up, recognizing we'll come back to it?
I think 15 would be.
15? Okay, so is there a motion to extend the meeting 15 minutes? I saw Commissioner Kerd ready first, so.
I move to extend the meeting by 15 minutes.
And Commissioner Dodd?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor of extending 15 minutes? So I see unanimous raising of hands. We will extend the meeting 15 minutes to 9:15 and hopefully get through this first section, recognizing we will come back to another study session on this. And then there will also be a public hearing in the future. I do see a lot of questions popping in the Q and A, and I would remind members of the public that this is a study session, and we won't be able to get to all those questions tonight. So Dave, carry on.
And and if you have questions, please do email them to me, questions or comments. So we're we're investigating two base options. We we started with the mandatory program and and there seemed to be su- support for that last time around, but the analysis of these special setbacks makes us realize makes us realize that not all properties will will gain capacity. So it's probably not going to be considered fair to apply a affordable housing requirement in those cases. So if if there still is a interest in a mandatory program, we would look at changing the boundaries and essentially only doing half of of A and and B and 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 part of C and D, most likely. The other option, which now is starting to perhaps look more more justifiable, is the voluntary incentive and that would basically allow the property owner, the developer, to to analyze whether it's worth getting whatever additional capacity is is available and and whether that would pencil out with an affordable affordable housing requirement. So we're analyzing both of those. We just don't have, and we think that we we're we're honing in on a on a kind of a menu of affordable options that would apply a certain percentage at a certain level for, just for the additional height, that would apply a certain percentage for multifamily tax exemption and could apply a separate percentage for a parking reduction, which would have to be justified by a parking study. We just don't have have hard numbers to give you right now. And then on the microhousing issues, this is a schematic, an updated schematic of the applicant's proposal. Again, I want to emphasize that this, these code amendments wouldn't mandate microhousing. They wouldn't, we're trying to craft these incentives in a way that they'll work for for microhousing. But what we're discovering is that we we really do need different provisions because microhousing is in itself naturally a fairly affordable housing type. There need to be different affordability requirements for microhousing projects. So that complicates things, but it will give us a an approach that we can use elsewhere in the city as well. So anyway, this is an updated schematic, a little bit different than what I showed you last time. The proposal now is for 181 units total, and the third and fourth floors include some larger loft units. They're still essentially studio apartments because it's all one space except for the bathroom. And you have up to 46 units sharing two kitchens or per floor on the lower floors. So we we do see it as a need to provide a definition of of microhousing and separate affordability provisions and potentially parking provisions for for microhousing. And there may be others going forward. And then in terms of parking reductions, again, there's a couple of options that we're looking at. And as you recall, and we discussed this last time, the existing parking reductions for market-rate housing were limited to the state minimums in order for us to link affordability to any further reductions. So we limited those to a quarter-mile radius from frequent transit, and we also limited them to only to a reduction to one space per bedroom, which is the current requirement in general downtown corridor. So to go beyond that will require amendments to to those provisions for market-rate housing. And we're looking at how to link those to a, either a mandatory program or a voluntary incentive. And you've already dealt with some some of the complexities of that in in Canyon Park, how we were calculating the cost savings for the reduction in parking and and applying that to a reasonable affordable housing provision. Not exactly rocket science, but it is complex. So these are the things that we were looking for commission feedback on. Based on what you've heard to date and understanding that we hadn't been, we aren't able, at this point, to give you any specific numbers, any thoughts about a mandatory program versus and and limiting that to areas that that do have capacity increase or a voluntary incentive that could apply more broadly and leave it up to the applicant to determine whether it makes sense to to apply for that. Preferences between an across-the-board parking reduction with mandatory affordability versus parking reductions coupled with additional affordability, that gets back to the mandatory versus voluntary efforts. And and then we are looking at parking reductions for microhousing that either are independent of any other factors or potentially tied to the multifamily tax exemption or well, and the other option would be tied to additional affordability. And then, given all that, any additional analysis that the commission would like to see? I think that is us two. Your questions and clarifications. I wanted to give the applicant an opportunity to weigh in at this point. And then any other comments that commissioners would like to register at this point. At that point, but given that, I'm gonna stop sharing. Go back if anyone wants to address specific illustrations.
So Commissioner Gustafson?
Thank you, Chair. Sarah Gustafson here. What I see presented is a choice that we would have to make between mandatory affordable housing provisions in the places with capacity or voluntary that could apply to the whole area. Is it possible to have both mandatory in the affected areas and voluntary in areas that would be less likely to have the capacity increase? Or is that just too much layering?
It's a good question. We can look into that, whether there'd be a reasonable way to do that.
Okay, other commissioners?
And I should say, one one aspect is, when it is a voluntary, the advice that I've gotten from from Mike Stanger at Arch is that you can't ask for quite as much when it's voluntary or or else developers just won't, won't, aren't likely to do it.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
I'm there. Commissioner Westerbeck here. I'm with Sarah. I I I get a bit conflicted, which is why I'm really glad that Dave's gonna have staff study this a bit more, because I love the idea with mandatory that we're likely to get more affordable units. But as someone who has done a little bit of development and designs buildings, sometimes it'd be really nice to have to have it be voluntary and have sort of an à la carte menu of, well, I could do MFT or parking reductions or combination. Because as customer, Commissioner Kerd alluded to a while ago, each site has its own weird constraints and issues. And so sometimes, right, you know, in this lot, this particular project, you know, it's really going to benefit from doing this, one of these four options versus this other site where, you know, maybe I want a different set of options for voluntary. And I think, you know, sometimes we're going to get better projects that way. So more analysis, I think, is going to be really helpful because they both have their advantages, I think, at times, depending on what the project is and where it's located. That's that's all. So I appreciate the more analysis coming.
Commissioner Dodd?
Thank you. I I like what Commissioner Westerbeck said about what I called in my head an affordability prefix menu, where you have different choices to choose from based on kind of what you're trying to do with the lot. Because I do think these are a lot of, even though they're all geographically close, there's a lot of different conditions that we saw on the maps. And I, but I do think some kind of, if not one mandatory option, a mandatory set of options really speaks to me because we are we are setting the groundwork for some neighborhoods to eventually see a lot of change. And I think it needs to be, the result of that needs to be worth what we're doing. You know, I I really empathize with folks who have a lot of strong feelings about their neighborhood potentially changing. Like I said, I've lived here for a long time, so I've seen, growing up in Queensborough and now living in Shelton View, I mean, those are very changed neighborhoods from the early 90s when I moved here. And it's, you know, you don't buy a whole neighborhood when you buy a house, you buy your house, but it's still something that you hold on to as a resident. So I want to make sure that the the compromise for what's best for all of Bothell still is worth that change, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Other commissioners?
I'd like to say that the the approach of having a menu of different affordability requirements or different aspects, like micros and and like the additional height and MFT, that could be applied to both mandatory and voluntary programs. And I'd also invite Mike Stanger, if if there's any of this that I'm saying that's out of line or if you have additional input, raise your hand and and so that Mike can panel you or to and recognize you.
Commissioner Alderks, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Alderks here. I was just going to echo what what Dave just said. I think that having that menu of options in these areas, along with what the other commissioners have said, sounds like a good. the other commissioners have said, sounds like a good, a good direction. And thank you very much for pursuing that and kind of shaping what that might look like.
Okay, others? I just have one comment, not directly on point to the issues you raised, but it kind of, something I thought of based on a comment Commissioner Kerd made last meeting about the general cost of housing in Bothell. And we see more and more million dollar houses in Bothell, which I never thought I'd see. But it seems to me that has the effect of raising the area income. And when we look at the median income, it, it gives me thought that we have to look at providing some lower level, below the median, you know. So, so some of that, more affordable housing, I'd like us to keep in mind as well. If we're looking at, you know, 60% of the income of people that are paying a million plus for homes, that's still a pretty expensive unit.
So, Mr. Chair, just being cognizant of the time.
Time, yes.
Thought of our extension, and I didn't know if you still wanted to hear from the applicant this evening. And I think there's just a couple more items, brief items on the agenda after that.
So I'd entertain a motion for maybe a five-minute extension. We'll hear from the applicant and some quick comments, not to run on too long. Is there a motion to extend perhaps five minutes? Commissioner Robson? Gotta unmute, though.
I'll second.
Motion to extend, yes.
All right. And Commissioner Westerbeck?
Commissioner Westerbeck, I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to extend for five minutes. All in favor? Okay, so let's extend. I think the next thing then is to hear from the applicant.
And I'm bringing him in right now. Play the unmute function is working. There you are. Okay?
You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mark. Go ahead.
Thank you for your consideration here. And there's so much detail that's been covered. But just as an overview, I just wanted to say, this is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime project or opportunity. It is, at least for us. It's unusual to find a developer that would build all micro housing units. So typically, you would have a traditional unit mix building would have two bedrooms, one bedroom, studios, and out of those units in your typical MFT program, there, 20% of those might be allocated to affordable housing. So if you had a, on that site, I don't know what could be built in the traditional unit mix scenario. But let's just say it's 100 units. It's probably more like 80. So you, the, the outcome would be, in most scenarios, would be 20 affordable units. In our case, what we're proposing is basically 181 affordable units. And we're not the developers that, we're not, we're not building this and then selling it off. We, we're going to build this and then hold it for the long term. And, you know, we've talked before about the success we've had in Shoreline at the 81-unit project we built about three years ago. And if any of you ever have a chance or want to see what that is, exactly, it's, it's at 17020 Aurora Avenue North in Shoreline, interurban lofts. You can get a good site, good sample of what we're proposing. Only this one's going to be a little, you know, obviously bigger and probably better, bigger units, more common areas, just a really nice project. So I don't know how much time I have. Should I, do I have time to address some of the questions about parking and other things, or are we trying to wrap up?
I'm gonna unmute myself. We're a little tight on time tonight, and we've extended twice. So perhaps if you could work with Dave, we will be having another session on this and get him the information. We really do appreciate you offering to get us that information. And I will speak for all the commissioners, which I don't often do, but I think we all do want to hear that information. But again, given the, where the clock is, it should be our next go-around on this.
Understood. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. So, Dave, I think that probably brings this item to a close.
Yes. So I would, and we don't have to continue the, the study session, but we will bring it back as a study session on May 5th.
All right. So it's on all your calendars. Look forward to it again in about a month. So in our remaining two minutes, unfinished business. I don't believe we have any Director Cotterman, do we?
No, we do not, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gustafson, I see you raising your hand.
Sarah Gustafson here. Hopefully, quick question. A lot of people on the commission are right now interested in the lot D, E, F, and G developments and about potential future guidelines for development in those areas. Are we free to talk about them amongst ourselves, since it is not yet a commission topic?
Well, let me think about that and get back to you if I could. And you're specifically talking about D, E, F, and G?
Yes. So if it becomes a commission topic, that's great, but keeping quiet until then.
I'll, I'll just add, because I'm part of those conversations, all, all the remaining city lots, P-South, City Hall, L-shaped lot, NEFG, all get kind of talked about as a, as a group, as it were, if you don't mind my saying, Sarah.
And to clarify, those lots are different than the D, E, and F that are part of tonight's conversation?
Yes, thank you for that. For the record, that's an important clarification. Yes, thank you.
We're not talking about chatting about these lots offline. Right, Commissioner Alderks?
Jenny Alderks here. Not to belabor the point, but I believe that the reason why we have lots with the same names, you know, same letters, is because they're part of different sub-areas. Is that correct? That we're talking about downtown versus the, sorry, you tell me.
Part of the same sub-area. Yeah, the, we just happen to have a lettering system for the city-owned parcels, and we happen to use a lettering system for the, the different areas. These aren't blocks, per se, they're, they're just areas.
Got it. Okay. Well, you know, for, for the public, for our, you know, for us to keep track of it as well. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So our final minute. Again, I don't believe there was any unfinished business, correct?
That's correct.
Any reports from staff?
No reports from staff tonight, Mr. Chair. And Dave, I was gonna ask if the next item, does that need to be tonight, or can that come back next time?
Well, I'll just fairly, I'll, I'll send the Planning Commission a, an email about a grant application that, that we're working on that was somewhat inspired or spurred by conversations on the Bo Pop Facebook group.
More information to come on that.
So we will all monitor our email and look forward to that being sent to us.
And I had suggested, Commissioner Robson, she might want to share this evening her experience from the short course that she attended. However, given the time, maybe we could do that next time as well. We're already over time, technically.
Yeah. So if we could hold that over, unless it was a pressing matter, and I know Commissioner Westerbeck also attended that course. So perhaps we could hear about that, because there are future sessions coming that some of us might want to attend. So Commissioner Dodd?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll, go ahead.
Commissioner Alderks, I saw your hand first.
Second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. If there are no objections, we will adjourn the meeting, the April 7th meeting of the Bothell Planning Commission, one minute late at 9:21. I want to thank you all for your attention, and we'll see you all in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Good night.